Well, folks, like I said in starting off this evening, I imagine some of you do have questions, but really this is an opportunity for the governor to hear from you folks, not in a two-minute testimonial. Some of you have probably called to testify for and against a particular issue with Juno or your local legislative information office, your ideas, your thoughts, your concerns. And like I said, some of you may not be comfortable in taking the microphone and talking with the governor or anyone directly. We do have surveys and other opportunities for you to provide your feedback and information accordingly. And so we'll have microphones here with staff at this aisle and over here at this aisle or orderly queue and however you want to do that. And we'll get the -- yeah, you got your survey filled out? There you go. It's filled out already. We'll start to queue up here in just a moment. There's plenty of copies of that out in the foyer. We'll be here a while, so if you want to get up and grab it now or here in a little bit, don't worry about that. Governor, sort of before we get going, what I'd like to do is it's a year-plus into your administration. There is where we thought the state was going to be during your campaign, where we are a year now, and what in a year and change have you seen and has your methodology of governance evolved from candidate Mike Dunleavy to Governor Mike Dunleavy?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. And that's going to help us kind of frame where we're at. So, I ran for office and I was elected in 2018, assumed office last year, and been in office approximately 14 months, going on 14 months, 15 months. So when I ran for office, we knew that we had to contain the size of the budget. We knew that for years we were spending through our savings. So for example, in the past five years, we spent about $14 billion to $15 billion out of our savings to service what really is a structural deficit, meaning here's the size of our government, but our revenue that's coming in is much less. So we would backfill that hole with savings. And one of the reasons that was happening initially was because the history of Alaska and oil prices is oil prices go up, oil prices go down, oil prices go up, they go down. And this isn't the first time this happened. It's happened before in the past in Alaska. And usually Alaska's budget and this process was saved by an increase in price, a spike in price. Well, this appeared to have been a structural change that has occurred because of the fracting down in the lower 48, the technology that was employed. And so as of today, we are the largest producers of energy on the planet, the United States is. So we actually export energy now, where we used to, just a couple of years ago, we didn't do that. So we now export more energy than the supergiants such as Russia, Saudi Arabia, Venezuela, as we know, is having its issues. But nonetheless, there's a lot of oil. Today, I believe that the price of oil was about $52, $51 a barrel, which is lower than it has been for several months. There's could be a whole host of reasons for that involving the market regarding oil prices. But nonetheless, if you go back for a year when I was running for office and when I was a senator, we knew that we were spending too much. And if you look at the history, when I was in the Senate, there was discussions by myself and other senators that we have to contain the size of this budget because we are going to run out of savings. The result was that when I decided to hop into the race, we were watching oil prices as the campaign evolved, and oil prices kept going up. And we're still kind of in the beginning of the whole fracting and how much is it really going to have an impact on the country, on the oil prices. But nonetheless, the price of oil kept climbing in the spring and the summer, and by October, a month before the election, October 10th, it hit a high of $85 a barrel. I'll put that in perspective. So oil at $85 a barrel versus $51 today or $52 a barrel today represents about a 2.2 to 2.3 billion-dollar revenue between that $52 and $85 a barrel. So on October 10th, it hit about $85 a barrel, a month before the election, and after that it started to go down. Now, there were predictions, there's always predictions, it will go up, it'll go down, it'll stay the same. But nonetheless, we had hoped at that stage of the game and through the campaign that we could do a step-down approach, which I had advocated when I was in the Senate, reduce a little one year, reduce a little more the next year, hem it in, use some savings, reduce, and get it down to a certain level. Keeping in mind that the investments in the North Slope oil patch, which are real and have happened, billions of dollars over the last several years, have produced what many of the producers and small producers on the slope believe will be an additional 200,000 to 300,000 barrels of oil in the pipeline. So we had to view this as kind of a temporary situation. Problem was on December 27, 28th, oil had hit $54 a barrel, and the belief was that it was going to keep going down. So we made a decision, a strategic decision, to reduce the budget. Instead of the step-down approach, present to Alaska is what a budget reduced by $1.6 billion would look like. And contrary to what some have said in the press and others, no, I did not think that that $1.6 billion was going to be accepted by the legislature, but we certainly wanted to demonstrate what a large budget deficit would look like and try and earmark some services, some programs for the legislature to consider reducing or eliminating. The discussion obviously was very robust, very heated. Most of the people that I've talked to, they would say, you know, we realize that we have a budget issue, but the reductions that you're presenting right now appear to be too steep, too soon. So the end result was we had a protracted budget discussion, again, the folks on both sides of the issue. And what we failed to do, and that's what we were alluding to earlier, what I failed to do was to come out early on and explain where we were. In other words, I should have, and I'll be the first to admit, should have come out early on and explained to the public like we are here today. We did go out last year in the springtime and presented what we believe was a budget picture and some budget alternatives. But nonetheless, hindsight, when you look back on a year, should have got out a lot more, should have hit as many communities as possible, as many opportunities as possible. And so again, I can't undo what happened last year in terms of the communication issues, but we're certainly going to work hard at trying to improve upon that so everyone understands what's ahead of us. When you checked in, there were three packets of information, and I just want to just touch base very briefly on them. One is a survey, if you wish to fill out. That information can be very helpful for us as we make some final decisions as we go forward on the budget. Another one is a thicker packet, and this is really for folks that are interested in really diving into accounts and funds and balances and what we have going on in the state government that we deal with in terms of legislators and our office in building budgets. So this is going to be something you want to take home. Some of you may be bored to death looking at it. I don't blame you. Others will, I think, find it interesting when you do a deep dive in this. But this will also give you an opportunity to email the office and let us know what your thoughts are once you really go through this particular packet. And then it's kind of a one-page or front and back, and this is just some of the bills that pertain to the budget. This is not all of the bills, but some of the bills that pertain to the budget that we believe will make an impact one way or the other. And we started out last year with laying out on the table a plan, reductions, but then also some constitutional amendments for the people of Alaska to really get an opportunity to take a look at, decide if you wanted to be able to vote on things like whether we were going to tax you, whether you agreed with that, whether we were going to change the permanent fund dividend and how that was going to look and whether you agreed with that, and a spending limit to hem ourselves in. And the reason we were doing this is history has a habit of repeating itself. So back in the '70s, in 1969, when Prudhoe Bay was really realized how much oil was there, we got about $800 to $900 million in lease sales, which was phenomenal for a state and a state government whose budget at the time was only about $200 million. So nonetheless, we got that big lease sale, and what happened in a short period of time is, and the history shows this, we spent that money. And so people back then were very concerned that when Prudhoe Bay itself came online and it was estimated that we would be getting millions of barrels going through that line per day, that we would continue to spend that money and that we wouldn't leave any money left for future generations, our kids and grandkids. So that's how the permanent fund actually became part of the constitution. It is under Jay Hammond and a bunch of legislators that were looking to the future. They allowed Alaskans to vote on a permanent fund concept and put it in the constitution. So in the mid-'70s, that's what occurred, to save some of that money. The PFD program came later, in the early '80s, so that Alaskans, there's a lot of, there's no doubt, there's a lot of discussion as to what the purpose of the permanent fund dividend is and what the purpose of the permanent fund corporation was. From my reading of the history, the permanent fund was, the permanent fund corporation was to save money, a finite resource, oil, for future generations, both in government and potentially a dividend program. The dividend program comes into place. Two other things happened at that time in which Alaskans really want to take control of spending. They also put in place a spending limit, 1981, a spending limit that was supposed to hem in the spending of government. The problem with that spending limit, and it was reaffirmed in 1986, and it's still on the books, the problem with that spending limit is the calculations and the formulas were pegged at a very steep incline. So in order for that to really work today, we'd have to spend about $9.7 billion of state money, when in fact where we are now is our state government is spending about 4.6 in state money. Our total spend is about $10 billion when you add federal money into it, nonetheless. So we laid those constitutional amendments out on the table. They're still in committees now. We're asking the legislature to move them because we believe this, that you should be given a right to vote to help us form a sustainable budget that has some sideboards on it. Because when we come into that 200,000 to 300,000 barrels of new oil, which we're anticipating, when we come into new revenue, we want to make sure that we don't spend it again. And how do we know we're going to spend it? As I mentioned, the past five years, we spent about $14 billion of the constitutional budget reserve. And so we're trying to hem ourselves in. So what we did this year was because when we laid that budget out last year, it kind of took the oxygen out of the room. It became the focus, the reductions and the cuts. There's no doubt about it. We were hoping that the legislature would take a harder look at the sideboards that we were trying to put on as well. That didn't really happen, and for those that follow the budget process know that we've stumbled in the spring and summer, we went back and forth on vetoes, veto override, special sessions, et cetera. We didn't want to have a repeat of that this year. We wanted to be able to have a conversation with the legislature and the people of Alaska. So what we did is we put a flat budget in, a flat budget, because one of the things we were told last year is that budget that we had put in would wreck the economy and would destroy the economy. And we certainly were concerned about having that happen. The reality is, at this stage of the game, that doesn't appear to have occurred. And you know, our unemployment rate is lower, our investment in Alaska is higher, our personal income growth according to the statistics is higher. So right now, we're doing okay. We want to still get more jobs in Alaska and more investment. But nonetheless, we didn't want to double down on reductions and not have the conversation about other things we could do to hem ourselves in. So that was the purpose of the flat budget. So here we are in March, legislature is, I think, doing the best they can to take a look at what are we going to do in terms of any sideboards. But what they're also having a discussion about, that I would like you to think about, and this is the feedback I'm hoping to get from folks tonight, is what are your thoughts on those constitutional amendments, a spending limit? Should you be given the right to decide if you want to be taxed? They do this in places like Colorado. And also, how do you want the PFD to look like? Do you want the PFD to be changed? Do you feel that there's a need to revise the formula? Is that something that should be in the discussion? Because what's happened the last couple of years is the PFD formula has not been changed. It's just the amount that the legislature is appropriate to it has been lower. So it's very important for me to know that in the legislature because you will always have the right to repeal any bill we put in if you don't like it. It's in our constitution. It's part of the initiative process and the repeal process. So let's say there was a tax put in place here this year. You didn't like it. You can repeal it. In 1980, '81, we had an income tax. And there was a belief that with Prudhoe Bay coming online, we no longer needed the income tax. So there was a movement afoot to gather signatures to repeal the income tax because you have the right to do that. But before the initiative process took place, the legislature took it upon themselves to repeal the income tax. So what I don't want to have, and I think a lot of Alaskans don't want to have, is we come up with a fiscal plan between the governor and the legislature. Alaskans don't feel that they're involved. We roll out things like, and I'm making this up, an income tax at a certain rate and a property tax at a certain rate. And if you don't feel that that's the right thing to do, you could go to the polls and repeal that, which then adds to the instability that we've had the last couple of years. So what I've tried to have the conversation with the legislature is let's bring the people on the front end through constitutional amendments. Let's give them an opportunity to be part of that. So that's part of the discussion that's going on now. So in the papers, what we're asking is your thoughts on taxes, your thoughts on sales taxes, income taxes, oil taxes, there's an oil tax initiative that looks like it's headed to the ballot, your thoughts on your ability to have a vote on your constitution, whether you want to hem it in on our spending or whether you don't, whether you want to change the formula of the PFD, whether you want to be part of that process or not, and whether you want to be consulted first if we're going to lay a tax on you, and any reductions or any other ideas that you have. And I'm going to wrap my part up here because I want to listen to what your thoughts are. We rolled out, for example, a lottery idea. It's small. It's a small, there's no doubt, it's a small issue. It's certainly not going to solve the fiscal issue, but what it can do is, depending on how that lottery has worked and what it looks like over time, it could be $8 million, it could be $20 million, it could be $30 million. But that money at least could be used for things like the homeless situation or some domestic violence programs or combating our drug issues in the state of Alaska. It certainly can help, but it's not going to solve the issues. So in the end, there are going to have to be some pretty tough decisions made. And I believe, and a number of legislators believe, that those decisions are best made with you as opposed to just doing it on our own. Because in the end, we serve you. This is a small enough state that we know a lot of, each of us know folks in the state of Alaska. It's a small enough state, but nonetheless, we serve you. We want to make sure that we get this right so that we don't have to go through this process every year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and I'm going to be taking some notes up here because I want to hear your ideas on taxes, permanent fund, constitutional amendments, reductions, any other issues that you think could help us make some good decisions moving forward on this budget.
Reality is, how we got here is we didn't manage our resources properly. I mean, that's basically what we did wrong. So what we need to do right is to manage them properly to see how we can get cost. I mean, if you're selling tickets at the ferry for the ferry and you're making 150 grand a year, that's part of the problem. You know, we need to look through those kinds of things and see how did we turn into a monster? How did we get these programs turned into monsters where we can't fix them? I mean, it seems like we can't, but you know, everybody, you know, when you watch the testimonies where people are testifying for the budget, you know, it kind of reminds me of analogy I used. You get two pizzas, two great big pizzas, you put them on the table, and you got it cut into eight pieces each or 16 pieces, and you got 20 fatties in the room. Well, they're all trying to compete for that slice of pizza. And we're kind of putting each other, we're kind of, this SB 26 kind of put us all against each other to try to compete for those dollars. So nobody wants to trim anywhere. If anything, they're trying to grow. I mean, we've seen the budget that the governor put together last year. I mean, basically, when it was all said and done, the smoke settled, what we saved $50 million, and everybody thought that the sky was falling and we were going to die. You know, and it's not true. There's a lot of places to trim, but nobody wants to be trimmed. What I would ask when these people come forward and they tell their spill on how they think that they need to keep their job and everybody, well, who are you going to take it from to give it to you? Because you got those two pizzas, and there's not enough for everybody. So you have to either take a smaller slice or let one of the other fatties get it.
You know, Chris, you bring up a real interesting point. Governor has far better handwriting than me. So the other day, I was talking with somebody actually calling into KINY in Southeast, and they're very focused on the ferry system in Southeast. And I said, so here in a microcosm of the budget challenge, and you can add 15 to this, but let's take three. Let's take the ferry system, let's take public safety, and let's take healthcare. Now, those are three departments. You have to cut two to pay for one. Which two do you want to cut to pay for one? Now, that is a very simplistic description of the budgetary process. You know, I conceded that to the host in Southeast, but to your greater point, everybody has a program, everybody is a constituent of a specific program. And for years, as the governor pointed out earlier, the luxury was, well, we'll just wait for the next war in the Middle East and oil will go back up. Well, we've had war in the Middle East, we've had tankers take a missile to the side, we've had tankers seized in the Suez, or not in the Suez Canal, but near the Straits of Hormuz, and oil prices are flat at $50 a barrel. So there is no $90, $110 cavalry coming over the hill anymore. Now it's just us. That's a, go ahead, sir. Did you want to respond?
So, yeah, I basically. I like how this administration, we're looking at solving problems with real answers, not money grabs, you know, making a gasoline tax, you know, that's just money grabs. I mean, what did we solve? We didn't solve anything. You know, we just pushed the money to somebody else. You know, somebody else is going to pay for it. Who's going to pay? All right. Well, that's all I got. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
What was that one there again? That was SB 115. Going to ask questions. I do have actually several. Yeah, speaking of increasing fuel tax that you were doing there, that is SB 115 where we're actually going to be doing that, so.
Yeah, that was just passed in the Senate.
Yeah, that was just passed in the Senate.
Because that's always.
Yeah, but it's now going to the House.
All right.
So what was passed in the Senate, the gasoline tax, your point, sir, earlier today, was passed in the Senate. The House will have their say. They can add things, increase rates, maybe send it back to, or form a committee, what do they call those, conference committees? Yeah, you were there. Conference committees to go back and turn whatever the Senate passed into something completely different.
The governor can veto it, right?
He does have that pen.
Thank you. So I'm looking at your various formulas here, and I'm not seeing any information on specific contracts, moreover, and so forth about means of creative problem solutions here. It's just simply, well, we've got to cut one, we've got to put money elsewhere. Where is the information for people who want to try and find creative solutions to efficient, make the process more efficient as opposed to just simply cutting, raising taxes? Where are those creative solutions? Why is no one looking at these solutions?
We are. We're constantly internally looking at how we can make things more efficient. We are looking at contracts, we're looking at duplication of services, for example, maybe issues involving IT, procurement, et cetera. We are taking a look at that. So we are looking at everything. And I'm not, just real quick, we are putting together a number of teams on issues such as OCS foster care, which has been a longstanding issue in the state of Alaska, education. As you've heard, we've got a pretty good task force on the Southeast transportation, the ferry system, which I think is going to come up with some great ideas. But we are, you just, you don't see that on the paper, sir, and I don't know what your name is, but you don't see that on this paper, but that doesn't mean we're not doing it. And what I'm hoping is you and any and everyone else in here gives us some ideas and some areas to take a look at. But we are doing that. We are looking at some of those internal issues.
And then I also do want to take a look at your proposed SB 217, HB 270, where you're planning on paying off the PFD with our public lands. And your argument for it included saying that Alaskans just want to go snow machining, set up a minus 20, set up a tent, crash there for two days, and then move on, and you say, let them. How is making public lands where people already can do that, private lands, helping them do that?
Because out of all the states in the country, Alaska only has 1% of its land held by private individuals. There's no other state like this in the country. The fact that we have all of these federal parks and then the state holds onto the land when it really belongs to you. There was a time when folks came to Alaska in the '30s, '40s, '50s, '60s, '70s that under the federal government, which is ironic, they had more opportunity to get land in Alaska, to be able to put a farm up, put a home site up, cabins up, et cetera. In the end, these resources belong to you. We've been holding onto them in the state for reasons I don't really understand, and a lot of our folks that work for the state don't understand why we have. But this gives people an opportunity to exchange their PFD if this bill goes through, exchange your PFD for a land certificate that can be applied to purchase land in the state of Alaska. I think it's a win-win for Alaskans, but it's, I think I said, I don't think I just said camp or put your snow machine there. We're actually part of the task force that we're putting together, as Chris said, Tiger Force Task Force is.
I like Tiger Force.
We're also going to have an agricultural committee. We're going to have an agricultural committee, really look at agriculture in the state of Alaska, and part of that is land reform as well.
On to who we got next.
That's on your Facebook page with quotes, so.
No, no, I think what I said is that's not all I said was snow machines and camping. It's a whole host of reasons why people would want to own private land. You look at a place like Texas, different history, probably 98% of Texas is privately owned. We probably don't want that model in Alaska because we do want to have access to our lands, but we're two and a half times the size of Texas with 730,000 people. And I think Alaska should have a right to be able to get a piece of Alaska, and this is a way for that to happen.
Keep moving up the line.
Hi, Governor Dunleavy. My name is Bert, and I'm here tonight to represent a good majority of Alaska. It just doesn't seem to be able to get a time with you in any sort of way. We sit there and listen to the legislators, myself, I get to watch a lot of gavel-to-gavel with my side hobby that I do. And one of the bills they had today was HCR 13. I had a good review over this bill. It turns our PFD's ERA basically into tax revenue. It's to take the fund and moves directly into the UGF portion of the funding. It was voted on upon today directly upon caucus lines, which is one of the big issues that I want to discuss, is caucus rules. It seems that we have a party of Senate and House that is basically being controlled by roughly around eight people that are making decisions for all 60 people that are there. There's two people in the House right now that have definitely a good hold on everything you got. The majority leaders, we'll put it that way, not so much the minority leaders that are out there, they're trying to do their good. You can tell that by just the vote and how it came out at the very end for HCR 13 today. In the Senate, we got the two people, the one in charge of the finance and the one in charge of the Senate. Both of them are telling the other 20 people exactly what they're supposed to do. There's been many, many different senators, and I'm trying very hard not to name names here today, that these senators have come out openly, publicly, and called out the caucus rules that are happening out there right now. Local media who is filming this today has done a very good job of keeping this very hidden and under the wraps. Gavel-to-gavel themselves is on the show in the press briefing once, when we had all the Republican side of the Senate that came forward and called out the caucus rules that are falling inside of our Senate and our House, majorities out there. These caucus rules basically have one big rule. Whatever the final budget is, whether it goes against what your constituents have told you to vote for or not, if it's 100% against their values, if you are in the caucus, you are going to vote yes for this budget. This happened last year, this is happening again this year. HCR 13 that just passed today is a prime example of that happening inside of our House majority right now. The Senate majority, you can see it also kind of in the Senate Bill 115, or 115, which is the tax increase for our motor fuel, doubling our fuel tax that we pay right now. The people that are going to pay the most for this tax is going to be people that live in Houston, Wasilla, places like that, that travel into Anchorage on a daily basis. We are going to pay the brunt of that tax. I would just love to know what your feelings are on both the HCR 13, the caucus rules, and motor fuel tax.
Yeah, good question. So we're going to examine what actually came out of the House today. And today, we were kind of wrapped up in this virus issue, but we're going to examine that here pretty quick. We'll have people on that. In terms of the caucus rules, you know, I had a, personally, I had a difficult time with the caucus rules when I was in the Senate. And it's really, that's, and I'm not pushing this off, but that's a separation of powers issue within the legislature. They, in the end, they make their rules. There's ways to change those rules if they can convince enough people, and I think there are some people that are looking at that now within the House and the Senate. But you know, the caucus, the caucus rules are supposed to be in place to help business run smoothly. And when it's working, it seems to work. When it's not, it seems to be struggling like we're looking at this now, as we're viewing it. But it's a separate branch of government, and that's not a cop-out. I have no control over the legislature. It's separate for a reason. It goes back 200-some years that the founding fathers wanted it separate from the executive. But nonetheless, you know, at this stage of the game, all we can do is just encourage the legislature to stay focused on doing its right for Alaska and doing its right for Alaskans. And again, I got to go back and study the bill that came out of the House today. I think that was a bill from an individual up in Fairbanks, if I'm not mistaken. I think that was, uh, a bill from, uh, an individual up in Fairbanks, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and, you know, we'll take a look at that and see, um, again, all these bills that come out, we're hoping for the best. We'll take a look at them, and we're gonna have, we have conversations with, uh, House and Senate members all the time. And whatever final product comes out, in the end, I've got to, um, I've gotta make a decision as to whether that's in the best interest of Alaskans. And let me just say something, and I don't wanna take, belabor this, but I think it's very important, because I think this was a piece that was missed, uh, this past year. I, I think there's a belief that, um, I can veto, 'cause I've heard this, I can veto like I am a dictator. But the fact of the matter is, it's not the case. Um, the Constitution has that tool embedded for, for a governor to veto if they don't agree with the, um, certain line items in the budget or certain bills. But in the end, the, the body that is the most powerful, should be, always has been, and was intended to be, is the legislature. They can always override the vetoes. They can always override any veto, whether it's on a budget, line item, whether it's on a bill itself. And it's important, because what that means is, if the governor decides to use the line, the line item veto and vetoes a line item or a bill, having the legislature come back and override that means that most Alaskans, especially in their districts, the assumption is that they support that override. And that's part of the checks and balances. So last year, when it was, um, when it was portrayed by some, that I somehow, uh, took hold of the Constitution, put it off the side, I was actually following the Constitution, following the Constitution in terms of the, the vetoes. And the legislature always has that opportunity to override those vetoes. But anyway, we'll take a look at the bill and the, um, the caucus rules. I, there's not much I can do on the caucus rules, 'cause it's a separate branch of government.
Uh, by the way, can I, can I thank you for, in your downtime, watching gavel-to-gavel and having that on in your ear while that is going on? That is, and, and many of you here spend a little bit of time, no time, some time, whatever, paying attention to that. It, it is, do yourself a favor, or a disfavor, however you wanna frame it, give yourself fifteen to twenty minutes of an issue that you sort of care about, or maybe you don't care about, and listen to that back and forth as this gentleman has on a, on a near daily basis. It's, uh, not for the faint of heart, is it?
No.
No, it is not. Uh, Hans, go ahead, please.
Quick reminder, we'll try and get around two minutes per person, and if we have time, we'll do follow-ups after we get through the line. We wanna be able to go fair to everyone. I'm gonna get to you next, sir.
Uh, I'm Michael. I know, I knew he was gonna say that when I stepped up.
Don't be worried, Chambers.
I, I wanna just make the record clear. Uh, Governor Dunleavy has a senator voted against the, uh, budget, and he was thrown out of the caucus because of the caucus rule, so I applaud you for that. Uh, with regard to, uh, when we look at the budget, we have to look at education and Department of Human and Health Services, because that's the bulk of the budget. I am appalled, and I think most of the Alaskans are completely dismayed with the idea that we have fifty-four separate school districts in the state of Alaska. We have four separate school districts in Prince Wales Island. Pelican School District has a superintendent and eight children. It costs eighty-four thousand dollars per child in the Pelican School District. We have a, uh, overriding administrative, uh, procedures here in the state of Alaska, and I would certainly like to see the administration go to remote administration and pull that money back and put it in the classroom where it needs to be, where we can look at, look at outcomes. The second thing is, is with the Department of Human Health Services, the Obama administration did an effective job partnering with Governor Walker and having Obamacare here in the state of Alaska. We probably support more than any other state in the Union. Uh, through Valerie Davidson, who was the DHS Commissioner, they encouraged all natives here in the state of Alaska to sign up for Medicaid. What we're doing is, we're taking, uh, Indian Health Services is a federal obligation, it's a federal treaty with the Indian nations, and what they're doing is they're using Medicaid in the state of Alaska, in the citizens of Alaska, to backfill a treaty obligation. That's the obligation of the federal government, it's not the obligation of the citizens of the state of Alaska. Uh, the only other thing I'd say is, with regard to constitutional amendments, we have a real problem on our hands, because if you think that you're gonna get a spending cap amendment through the House where it's filled full of a lot of Democrats and Republicans that like to spend money, well, good luck on that. I highly recommend, uh, Governor, that you start talking about a constitutional convention in, in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Oh, how come he gets applause? Nobody's clapped for us yet.
Thank you, Governor. It's my view that you probably wouldn't be under recall if you took the following suggestion: more revenue. According to Pew Research, forty percent of Americans cannot come up with the sudden expense of four hundred dollars unless they put it on a credit card or sold something. Almost certainly, Alaskans are the same but worse off than our fellow citizens from the lower forty-eight. Therefore, a sales tax or an income tax should not be shouldered by this forty percent. Before I came to Alaska six years ago, I was a citizen and resident of Georgia. There, the people were subject to an income tax plus a sales tax. However, I myself never paid income taxes, because they were generally designed by the state of Georgia to only affect the wealthy. Using Georgia as a model, may I suggest that you, the governor, should support the beginning of an income tax that is designed to only affect the wealthier one-third of Alaskans. Not only would you have sufficient in revenue for your budget, you'd be a hero, or courageous hero, and you wouldn't be facing this recall.
Hey, to your, to your question, uh, good question. Uh, the, the Georgia, uh, model, do you know what the baseline, when you said only the top third wealthy Georgians...
I've never paid income taxes, ever.
No, no, but I mean, what was the floor on that income tax? Was it...
I don't know.
Okay, okay. Just checking. Yes, Hans, go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'm not allowed to hold it. I do like karaoke, so you're good. Governor Dunleavy, thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Valerie, and as an Alaskan, the resource that I consider the most valuable are our children. They are the future of our state, and as an educator and a former educator yourself, I'm sure that you are aware that the number-one impact in the classroom is the teacher in the room. My question is, because I'm also a debate coach, so you should start out with that, is there, are there things that you are doing to look at our, our issues regarding teacher retention, regarding especially tier-three retirements? My husband and I are both tier-three teachers. We love Alaska. We want to stay here, this is where we want to be. But the system that we have created has resulted in a tourist teacher, where teachers come, they do their five years, they pack things up, they take their retirement with them, and it leaves the state. Not only is this impacting those of us that are tier-three teachers, but also tier-one and tier-two that are eventually going to need some of those resources that they can retire on as well. Uh, many people don't know that we also do not pay into Social Security as teachers. We have no backup plan. So what can we do to help that number-one resource, our children, four of mine included in that number, to help retain our teachers so that we really can better our education system in Alaska? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
There is substantial benefits in lieu of Social Security. That was voted on years ago, it's a far better system. You probably have half a million dollars to be saving.
So, so what we're doing is, we have, and I mentioned this in the State of the State, that a, uh, a teacher is probably the most important component, is the most important component, uh, for a child to be successful. So we are setting up a working group that will consist of about nine folks that are gonna look at the recruitment and retention issues in Alaska, especially in our hard-to-fill positions and our hard-to-fill locations. We're gonna take a real long, deep look at that. Um, how much of it is, uh, uh, retirement? How much of it is paid? How much of it is, uh, housing, uh, infrastructure, support from various communities? We're gonna take a look at everything, and it's gonna be made up of educators. And we anticipate that they'll meet in the spring, starting shortly, uh, into the summer, and we're, we're looking forward to getting a report from them so we can turn things into policy by September first. But the recruitment and retention issues, as you mentioned, is gonna be the focus of this working group.
And there are other, other challenges in other departments as well, dovetailing what the governor said. Department of Corrections, if anyone here is looking for a rewarding and challenging career in the world of corrections, the Department of Corrections is currently hiring. And they're hiring you and about a hundred and ninety-nine of your neighbors, uh, if we open the Palmer facility. So Commissioner Dahlstrom buys me coffee once a week, whenever I'm at a public forum, to remind people that if you have someone in your family looking to jumpstart or go in a career direction, uh, Corrections is recruiting as well. Go ahead, Hans.
Uh, my name is Dave Maxwell, I am from Palmer. Um, Mr. Stearns, you don't know what kind of segue you just gave me. I used to work for the Department of Corrections, I was a whistleblower. I think the governor knows a little bit of the story. Um, he set up a meeting with me, for me, to be with Nancy Dahlstrom and Kelly Good. And before I go off-target, I'm gonna go back to my reading here, but I just couldn't, I couldn't help but address the fact that, what a segue. And I used to work for Palmer Corrections, I was the electrician there. I was fired for whistleblowing. Mr. Governor, why I am here is to inform you on what my family and I implore you to do as our voted-for governor. We want you to do what you promised before we voted for you. To clarify, if we have to again, first, we want you to protect our PFD. A full PFD is what we want, and all the back payments to be paid in full. Second, we want a government sized appropriately for what we need. Right now, it is way too big, and I believe it could be cut by a third, and most of us wouldn't even notice. Third, we want the unions busted. They have way too much power and are destroying the potential of our state. And lastly, for now, I would like a meeting with you personally, based on the results of a meeting you orchestrated for me and my wife and Nancy Dahlstrom and Kelly Good with the Department of Corrections. This has to do with the mantra that you repeated often during your campaign, which I helped, in quotes, "People have lost their trust in this government," end of quote. The way I was treated, Mr. Governor, was highly inappropriate after that meeting. Is this how we gain the trust back? Please give me an hour of your time for a personal meeting, and let's see if we can restore that trust. Thank you.
And I gotta, um, Dave, if you wanna grab a card off John, we'll get that set up.
Hi, Governor, my name is Pete Robertson. I sent you a letter last month, and I'm glad that I have the opportunity to follow up and meet with you tonight, and I prepared like written testimony that I'd like to, to say, and it deals with charitable gaming. Before there are new taxes, more budget cuts, or a greater percentage draw from savings or permanent fund earnings, I suggest changing the state's sixty-year-old gaming laws so that net proceeds no longer be sent to nonprofits, but instead only to the local government where gambling actually takes place. Here's why. Aliaska Ski Club, a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Saint Nicholas Orthodox Church, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The Alaska Democratic Party, ten thousand five hundred dollars. The National Rifle Association, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The Diamond High School Alumni Foundation, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The Alaska Cabaret Hotel Restaurant and Retailers Association, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The Nome Chamber of Commerce, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Why do social clubs, sports leagues, churches, political parties, advocacy groups, and business associations continue to receive substantial sums of state-authorized money while we are told our only choices are new taxes or more cuts? We have been presented with a false choice. If we're here tonight to set priorities, what is more important? Essential Services or Anchorage Town Sports Association, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars? The Anchorage Responsible Beverage Retailers Association, ninety-six thousand dollars? The Athabaskan Fiddlers Association, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars? The Alaska Airmen's Association, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars? Redirecting net gaming proceeds to local government will yield a measurable offset to state budget cuts and to the social costs in the towns where gambling actually takes place. It will also save the state money, because gaming regulators will no longer have to keep track of money spent by social clubs, like the Denali Soft-Tip Dart Association, thirty-six thousand dollars. They use the proceeds for airline tickets and hotel rooms to keep in an, to compete in an annual dart tournament in Las Vegas. Charitable gaming was passed in nineteen sixty over Governor Egan's veto. Egan warned that enforcement problems would pose major and costly difficulties. Egan's Attorney General called the bill "a dangerous experiment," because he knew regulators would never have the resources to foul the money spent by Interior Girls Softball Association, sixty-two thousand dollars. The Juneau Youth Wrestling Club, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. According to the state's 2018 Annual Gaming Report, in 2018, more than three hundred and seventy-six million dollars was gambled in Alaska. After operators paid prizes and expenses, thirty-five-point-two million was paid to a handful of municipalities and roughly one thousand nonprofits. Municipalities received one million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, or just five-point-six percent. Nonprofits like these got the rest. Our Lady of the Snow, seventy-five thousand dollars. Pop Warner Little Scholars, seventy-three thousand dollars. Ragachu Amateur Magic, Inc., eighty-two thousand dollars. Instead of gaming regulators, operators, and nonprofits deciding how to spend this money, shouldn't we, the people, through our elected officials, decide?
Could you send me a copy, then?
Can I just, informal poll, unrelated to that, just a quick show of hands, do, do people have, uh, a positive idea of, of a, or view of the proposed state lottery? That doesn't mean you'll ever buy a ticket, it doesn't mean you'll ever drop a dollar, but do you view at, at least a state lottery, even potentially dovetailing on what Pete said, an expansion of gaming opportunities positively? Just show of hands, I'm just, just curious in, in the room. Yeah. Thank you. Go ahead, Hans. Just keep it on.
How's it going? My name's LD Howard, I'm with 907 Freedom. Um, one issue I don't wanna bring up is, part of the reason a lot of people move up here is to not only partake of the beautiful state, but also enjoy more freedoms. Um, one thing I'm very happy of when I was looking at moving to Alaska was the state's constitution and how open it was for our Second Amendment rights. Um, we're dealing with, my organization, as well as many, many people right now, are dealing with something in the Matsui Borough with infringing on those rights and making it almost impossible to open more shooting ranges out there. Uh, we're actually having to circumvent now the borough by putting in its ballot initiatives so that the people can hear their voice. There's been numerous times, we had a rally of over six hundred-plus people show up on a weekday, they didn't hear us then, we had over a hundred people show up to make public comment, and only, I think, twelve people wanted it, and the rest of them didn't. So we feel disenfranchised, we're not being listened to, and we feel it's a very pivotal part of, of our rights and our freedoms, and we're very ardent about our, about those rights. One thing that we are very fearful of, and I think this caused a lot of fractures in communities and stuff, is this HB 62 and 198. I was wondering if, if, uh, I've been told by numerous lawmakers, one part of my organization, I've been calling a lot of them, they've been calling me, um, that this will go nowhere, that, you know, this is pretty much dead in the water. But we were also told the same thing with the shooting range ban in the Matsui. And so I was wondering if Governor Dunleavy, if you would, you know, pledge to unequivocally veto something that goes completely against the state constitution and against the United States Constitution, and infringing of our rights and causing incredible danger for our law enforcement officers, as well as the citizens of Alaska.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I'm not gonna look favorably upon anything that infringes upon our constitution. Um, I support the Second Amendment. Uh, I think, um, I think most Alaskans do, on both sides of the aisle, actually. And so, um, we're, we're gonna be keeping an eye on this, but I have no intention of, um, of, uh, violating the Constitution and, um, doing anything to undermine the Second Amendment rights.
Thank you, Governor.
Did you, did you say you're LD?
LD Howard.
LD Howard, yeah, yeah. You keep showing up on my Facebook feed, we're now Facebook friends.
All over Facebook right now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dunleavy, for, uh, coming, appreciate it. I'm, I'm really confused about what all this government talk is about. Has anyone got any idea why the lower forty-eight's ripping right now? It has to do with the fa, I mean, I'm a pretty simple guy, so I'm gonna talk in simple terms here, I don't have any numbers or blah, 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 what's all been talked about to this point, but, uh, one of the big things that's driven this, like, historic boom with the economy is the rollback of regulations, uh, just across the board. Um, this is, it's unprecedented. I've, I've been waiting for a crash so I can buy a house cheap, but it hasn't happened, man, it's terrible. Uh, like, I'm a, a small-time general contractor out of Wasilla. Um, last year, I had a job out in one of the local native communities, and it just so happened to be on a, uh, on an airport. and it just so happened to be on a, on an airport. And, so, but I believe that was a state lease. We got a contract signed on it, ready to go. Small job, nothing, nothing big, nothing special, we were just replacing what was there. And, this was, I think, May fourth, we were ready to go on it. We got a halt work notice, stopped work, we gotta, this gotta get approved by the state fire marshal. We waited until October. October, before I could proceed with this job. And just to let all the teachers know here, I made far less than you last year. No offense, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you guys. I have, I have four kids. But, yeah, that's a problem. It's a big problem. Regulations are, why are we talking about government and new taxes to solve problems here? How about get out of the way of business? Like, I, I mean, I don't have any specific examples of how to do that, or what the idea is. But, you know, we're ready to start a job on May fourth, and it takes till October for a state fire marshal to sign on a piece of paper saying, "Yeah, we can replace this hanger floor that's a wood floor with the same exact wood floor because the wood floor that's here is rotted." That's a problem. That's a really big problem. Furthermore, in Wasilla, I have to have a state business license, a professional business license, a Matsui Borough business license, a Wasilla sales tax account? We're talking about sales tax here and income tax? Like, come on, this is getting a little funny here. I mean, I would say, I would just, I would just like to echo the gentleman earlier who said that, we're all watching, we voted for you, I voted for you because of what you campaigned on. Take a hard line, and you're gonna see what's gonna happen with these next elections. For the turncoat Republicans that I voted for, who go to Juneau, where I don't have the opportunity to do what we're doing right now, and vote completely opposite of what they said when they were running it for election. We're gonna vote 'em out, I can guarantee you it. I can guarantee you that.
So just a quick comment on the regulations. I agree with you. Regulations cost money, cost time. We're reviewing all of our regulations. We've got about close to two hundred regulations that we have earmarked for potential revision or actually removal. And these aren't gonna be regulations that, of course, protect life safety. These will be regulations that, over time, have grown up just because if it's a permitting process, or somebody thought it was a good idea, but in the end, may end up doing exactly what you said, and that is just spending a lot of time, taking a lot of time. I know at the federal level, this, the administration is also looking at doing the same thing, to try and shrink down the timeline, for example, building a road from nine years down to two or three, because time is money. So, I agree with you, we're working on it, and we should be rolling out some things here shortly in terms of what regs will be revised or rolled back.
Okay, Hans.
Governor, thank you for coming here tonight. My name's Jim Caswell. I have a question and then a quick comment. Some thirty years ago, I helped form the Denali Borough, and I served as an elected assemblyman for fifteen years. We were forward-looking, and we have a permanent fund up there, and we do true forward funding. My question is, are you familiar how that works up there? And if not, please become familiar with it.
I'm not familiar with the Denali Borough's funding process.
I think it'd be helpful if you just became aware of that. My comment is that I'm a miner also, and for eight years, I've been trying to get access to my, some mining claims. To develop that property, I've out-of-pocket spent probably close to a hundred thousand dollars on lease payments and payments in lieu of annual labor because I can't get to my property. And for eight years, I've been trying to work with DNR to get access to that property.
My name is Miranda Walso, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I first wanted to thank you for some of the changes your administration has rolled out regards to state labor and practices for hiring individuals into positions. A lot of the changes that have been brought out have made it so that people are evaluated on their competencies and their ability to perform the job, rather than having served in the position beforehand. I think that changing things like that, that are habitual in practice, are going to make a big difference long-term. I also wanted to thank you for introducing the bill on the Interstate Nursing Licensor Compact. I think that those are the types of bills that, long-term, make a big difference. I wanted to encourage you to look into something similar for teachers statewide, and other types of professionals that are difficult to recruit and hard to fill. I wanted to go on the record saying I do think that your bill on the gambling corporation was a good one. It's one that's had bipartisan support in the past. Representative Grunberg had done it. And I think that it's an opportunity for a broader discussion. One of the things that's unique in Alaska is our prevalence of publicly-owned private corporations, such as the Permanent Fund Corporation, the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation, things like that. I think there's a lot of opportunity to explore utilizing that vehicle for things like healthcare, things like substance abuse, and for other types of services that are so important to Alaskans, but that are often difficult to fund. I wanted to encourage you to, in the budget, one of the changes that had the biggest impact long-term was the reverse sweep. The constitution prohibits dedication of funds, but we have gotten around that with designated funds. The ability to require all funds to compete equally or to address whether or not we believe certain types of services should be exempted from that, exempted from that requirement, is a conversation that hasn't happened. I think the changes to the dividend, and it becoming a similar appropriation set at the will of the legislature year to year, has really changed how that's impacted Alaskans. I think it is time to recognize that it's no longer governed by the formula. I think the more books we, the more laws we have on the books that are ignored, the less impact those have, and the harder it is to hold people accountable. So I would encourage you to utilize the changes to how the appropriation from the permanent fund moves through the budget as a way to explore other changes as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor Dunleavy, for coming and speaking with us. I'm Bill Topol, I'm one of your supporters for many years now. I'm gonna, I have opinions on many issues. I'm gonna try to restrict them to literature that you have presented here tonight the best that I can. You think Alaska's on the right track or not? I put down unsure because of your stalemate with the legislature and the courts, and some turncoat Republicans and conservatives. I understand the dilemma you're in. I don't envy you. Just hang in there, be tough. President Trump is tough. If you can be tough like him, you might just come out of this really good for the people of Alaska. Okay, what do you think's the most important issue facing Alaska? I personally think it's the legislative stealing of the PFD. Okay, if you just take Anchorage alone, which includes Chugak, Eagle River, Birchwood, and Girdwood, you're looking at about three hundred thousand recipients of the PFD. Now, last year, sixteen hundred dollars per each of those recipients brought in, just short of five hundred million dollars to Anchorage. The thirteen hundred or so that was missing represents about over four hundred million dollars that was deprived from individuals in the private sector, which keeps them from growing and prospering. Okay, what options do you support to close the budget gap? I still think reducing the size of the budget and also opening up more land for economic development. That's just both a short-term and long-term solution. We gotta get more oil through that pipeline. There's two variables that satisfy that budget revenue situation we have. It's not just the price of oil, it's also the amount of oil throughput through the pipeline. We can't control the price of oil, there's a glut on the market. What we can do is increase enough oil in there, and maybe use some of that in-state as well. What I think regarding education, I give it a D. There's low test scores, dismal graduation rates, increasing per capita and per student budget cuts, budget costs, excuse me, increasing behavioral problems in the classroom, lack of effective classroom discipline. And most importantly, get rid of Common Core. If it's confusing for some of the teachers, how can they teach that to the kids, the elementary school kids? Common Core is designed to be more of a, more designed for middle school and high school students, at best. Okay, these elementary school kids, they're not able to comprehend some of this kind of way of thinking, okay? Crime is still increasing in the Anchorage area, I don't know how it is in the rest of the state. Those are essentially, again, my comments, we expect what you have here, it might help you with regards to education and economic development. Keep trying, don't give up, hang in there. A lot of people have your back. Don't give up on the people that support you, though. And I'm one of them.
I just wanna make clear, I have no intention of giving up on any of these things.
That guy wore the attire to come to the head of the line. Big Cubs fan.
Evening, Mr. Governor. My name's JD Curry. I live here in Eagle River. It's a budget meeting. I wanna talk about pro-life. I think they're connected. Jesus said, "If they rejected you, they rejected me first, and they didn't reject me, they reject Him who sent me." You are being recalled because, you're being attempted to be recalled, because you're pro-life. If you were not pro-life, you would not be being recalled. Thank you for what you're doing with your pro-life stance. I love the Dan Fagan Show. I quit calling in there until, I was just venting. I need to do something about it. I picked ten people, we're gonna get together, and we're gonna do something. I see a bunch of people out here registering people to vote, and then recalling you. I wanna get people registered to vote to support pro-life. Now, what's gonna happen with our budget, the connection there, is if our legislature produces pro-life reform into law, God will bless our state. And now, God can bless our state in a way that doesn't make sense with dollar signs. God's bigger than that. He can get people to come together in a way He only can. It'll get good minds placed where they need to be. Those good things that'll happen, the answers will provide themselves. If one issue in our state and our country, there's a lot of important issues in our state and our country and the world. The most important one is abortion reform, is life. God will honor that. Taxes, income taxes, sales taxes should be a last-ditch effort. I would not like to see any taxes applied. The less taxes, the better. The PFD, a coworker of mine, we're talking about the PFD. He's upset that we're taking money away from the University of Fairbanks, and like forty percent, however many percent of the funding going there. All these people are gonna lose their jobs, so we should take our PFDs, the government should take our PFDs and give it to the state of Alaska, to the universities. Well, all my kids, since they've been born, we've put half of their PFD towards the college fund. My wife got inheritance from her grandfather. She paid cash for her college degree at UAA. You know, the government put that money in my hands. Half of it's now in the state's hands to, to use in the college fund. So, his, I think his point of view of the government taking that money and going to state is, I don't need a politician to do that. I've already done that. I'm responsible with money, you know, given the state gave to me, and I gave back to the state. I think, I think we have, we can do that. If everybody says, "Oh, I want my government, my government to decide where my money goes." Well, what if the government makes a bad choice, you know? People with local money and local economies, it's going to benefit. People like, you know, now, since this discussion has raised, like, families in rural Alaska without the PFDs, you know, are, they, they have, they have, for years, relied on that money for, I don't know, heating, things in rural Alaska are very expensive. And the PFDs help those people get by. Maybe it helps pay their heating bill, maybe it helps pay their grocery bill. Who knows what? Just the expense of living in rural Alaska. When I was a kid, my dad had a trailer parked, he inherited a business from his dad, and he lost that in the eighties under the Carter administration, when the tax rates went way up. I watched my dad go through it. He's paying it off to this day. He didn't declare bankruptcy. Because he's got principles. And my mom and dad, I watched them through that. That's where I got my faith, that's where I got, my dad knows a lot. He ran, he couldn't get a subdivision pass, he couldn't do it, because everybody else was getting theirs passed. And he didn't know why, so he figured out, because the board were...
JP, we're running up against time, quick.
If you could give me a suggestion on like, what my ten people and I should do to help the pro-life cause, I would be appreciative.
So, in regards to, your question was, the governor, a suggestion on getting your ten pro-life friends, et cetera, et cetera, involved, I believe it was his question, Governor? In regard to vote.
Do me a favor, leave him your cellphone, or grab a card off of wherever my guy is, up in the corner there. Then we can have a conversation.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Governor, for being here today. It's good to, always good to interact with your elected officials. My name is Derek Reed, and I am a teacher at a Title I school in Anchorage. And for the audience that might not know what that means, that means about eighty percent of the population of students I actually teach and interact with fall at or below the poverty line, meaning they're very, very poor students. You're a teacher and also a fellow believer in Christ, so you know what the classroom is like, and you know the place that we teach from, and the ministry that that is. You also know we don't ask for a lot. We just ask for the resources to be able to do our jobs effectively. And I'm just here to voice the need to improve educational outcomes. The gentleman prior to me mentioned the struggles we're having in education. And the number one struggle is staffing. Our class sizes are too large. They do not allow me to give students the attention and feedback they need to be successful readers and writers. Currently, Algebra I teachers have forty-five freshmen in their Algebra I classes. That is not a teachable number of students, and you know that. And you know the type of classroom management issues that arise in them. And just, as you know, yelling at a student doesn't fix the issue of the underlying issue that's there. Now, that is part, that is specifically at my school, where we have Title I funds to buffer the loss of teachers. Last year, we lost four staff, four staff members at my school, when we were supposed to lose twelve total. Meaning my principal used our Title I funds to save the job of eight staff members. This is before the cuts you proposed to education, which would actually have made class sizes larger, made my work week closer to eighty to ninety hours a week just to teach effective instruction in the way you and I know to teach. So I'm not here to necessarily ask a question. I'm here to just voice my concern and my cause, that if we want to do best by our students, we can no longer have student population sizes in classroom of thirty-five students in an English classroom, with me being expected to grade five-page essays that have detailed arguments out. We can't be expected, Algebra I teachers can't be expected to teach basic math principles to forty-five students or more. We need education reform, and it starts with further staffing. And you know what we do to the least of these among us, and what we do for the least of these among us. And that is one of our first callings as well. Thank you, Mr. Governor.
So, just, just to clarify, in the previous budget and this budget, the education funding wasn't cut?
The initial proposal.
Yeah, I said the proposed education cuts would have blown class sizes even larger.
Right. So, so, do you have any, like, revenue suggestions?
We can have that discussion one-on-one. I said I'm here to voice my opinion about the issue.
Okay, all right, all right, Q.
Hello, I'm David. Nice meeting with you, Governor. I think we met before about my issue. I work for, I'm a volunteer for a nonprofit organization, which I'm proudly to say that we don't take any state funding for. And I just sent a letter in the mail earlier this week that's going out to your office and several legislators in response to, in support of HB eighty-five, shared parenting bill. HB eighty-five is a, this bill's been kinda sent around for a while, but I just didn't know you would publicly support the bill. And also, HB sixty-two, my concern with HB sixty-two is different than the other gentleman, but it's related to the issue that I work on when it comes to... but it's related to the issue that I work on when it comes to child custody issues. And then also, thanks for that initial budget last year because that's certainly an eye-opener. There's a pendulum that swings from one extreme to the other. We kind of need to have that kind of discussion if we're going to end up trying to work together and rein into budget. And that pendulum, you know, going back the other way with the whole recall effort, luckily went away from that and went in the middle somewhere. So, I'm appreciative of that. But HB 300, though, the, basically the gutting of the PFD, if you ever get to your desk, I hope you veto it because I would love to sit there and use that money for my kids' education and their tuition because I got a daughter in college, I got a special needs adult, and two young kids are in high school getting ready to go to college. I frankly don't trust government to handle inappropriate money in a way that they think is good for me when I tend to disagree because obviously I have other priorities than they do. And so, I hope you veto it if it ever comes to your desk. The CBR was what? Twenty fifteen is around ten billion dollars?
One fourteen.
Around fourteen billion dollars in twenty fifteen, right? And where's it at now?
Oh, it's one point eight.
One point eight, yeah. So, that was a result of government spending, correct? And so, what I'm wondering is, why can't we do maybe like a five-year freeze on the CBR? Do a PO&amp;V draw on something like that where we don't touch the base funding like we do for the PFD? We don't touch the PFD, but we do a PO&amp;V draw for the, from the earnings reserve. Is there any kind of feasible way to do that with the CBR so that way legislators don't have to attack the PFD and tax the individual Alaskan for something that they failed to do in the past when it came to gross over-budget grant-overs, projects, and all kinds of other stuff? So, I'm just wondering if that's a feasible idea to do a kind of PO&amp;V draw on the CBR so that way, when the government gets their draw, that they could use their earnings reserve for legislation and projects and for state government? And last of all, are you going to do like a counter-recall campaign? Because if there's a petition out for a counter-recall campaign, I'd like to sign up for it so that way we can stop this recall, done-leaving campaign and we can keep going with what we're doing. Appreciate it.
There is, there are sites that are set up for that issue. But the CBR, going back to the CBR, the CBR was set up to have a three-quarter vote to access it, thinking that that higher threshold would actually preserve it. But over time, folks have just gotten together to get the three-quarter vote to access it for various reasons and that's one of the reasons why it's been diminished. But in terms of a PO&amp;V out of the CBR, you know, that's certainly something we can look at. But it's just the nature of how it's set up with a three-quarter vote is going to make that difficult.
Is that, is that so barely feasible?
There, you know, if it was at, when it was at fourteen billion dollars and if they had changed the laws surrounding, CBR is a constitutional budget reserve. So, I mean, that was set up by the people of Alaska to have a three-quarter vote. That part's going to be difficult to change unless a constitutional amendment goes out from the legislature. But it's just, it's going to make it difficult. That's why, that's one of the reasons why the legislature put a PO&amp;V draw on your earnings reserve coming out of your permanent fund because that only needed an eleven-person vote in the Senate, twenty-one in the House. And there was more money going into the earnings reserve of the permanent fund from the body of the permanent fund.
And HB 85?
Refresh my memory on HB 85.
Shared parenting bill.
The parenting bill, yeah. We got people looking at that. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what the status is because once again, we've been kind of focused the last couple of days on this virus issue. But we'll have folks take a look at that and see where that's at now. Thanks.
Good evening, Governor. My name's Dan. I'm going to switch topics here completely and talk about something that's really important, that is fish and fishing. I went to the Board of Fish meeting that we had in Anchorage earlier this month and I just want to comment on the Board of Fish and your position as the governor for appointing the members of that board. I found the meeting to be very interesting. I didn't realize it was that complicated. It was really impeach Trump and re-elect Trump with the commercial guys and the sport guys. And being a Matsui Valley guy that you are, I just, Mr. Wood was a great guy that you stuck on there and he was definitely on our side. Feel the same way about Mr. Peyton. He's also a pretty strong guy on there. And I know that in the remaining time that you're governor, you're going to have the opportunity to appoint more people to the Board of Fish. My perception going into that meeting earlier this month was that the Board of Fish is heavily leaning toward the commercial side. After attending two weeks of their meetings, that's not the case at all. I think the sport guys made out pretty good this time around. It's only every three years for Rubber Cook Inlet, so it's going to be a while before we do it again. But I believe the Matsui Valley and this area made out really good on some of the changes that they did on that. And I just want you to keep in mind when you have the chance to appoint more people to the board, which I hope you will, that you continue to keep the balance and keep the sport guys at least even on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Governor. Thank you for joining us tonight and listening to our comments. My name's Michael. And my concern tonight is on the full funding for the permanent fund dividend. You've been a big supporter in the past and I thank you for that. I feel that it is one of the few main driving forces of our economy in the state. I've heard talk of the legislature actually trying to cap the permanent fund at a fairly low level compared to what the full funding would have been last year. I feel that that would be a big mistake. I would love to see the permanent fund continue growing. I feel that it would greatly help the people that are on government assistance now. All of a sudden, if the permanent fund dividend say doubled to six thousand dollars, how many people would no longer need government assistance? I feel that a dollar spent on the permanent fund dividend is way more valuable to the state, economy, than a dollar spent on government. And so, I encourage you to continue fighting for full funding and thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Governor, thanks for being here. I'm Ken McCarty and I'm president of Birchwood Airport Association. I own a business. As you know, I'm trustee of mental health trust board. I talked about five things quickly. One is business and you're open for business. But I see some of the regulations, bureaucracies that are not keeping that theme. Corporation and professional licensing has been a real challenge to work with, to get information. I have a person that's working for me. I've been a psychiatrist in Alaska for twenty-six years and just recently has been shunned by professional licensing, by not getting documentation in, believed to be on time, but I won't get into the depths of that. It's just been very difficult, so, running business. As the case of Birchwood Airport, DOT came in and they resurfaced the asphalt area, not the runway, but the taxiways and stuff like that. And they did a great job putting the asphalt down, but when it came down to putting the tie-downs for the planes, they admitted they didn't know what they were doing. They're just highway people. And so, we told them, "They're doing it wrong. Stop what you're doing." You know, find out. And they said, "It's cheaper to fix the problem later than to stop and do it right now." Now, I don't know if any business has that in the theme that just keep on messing up, but that was a theme that we're hearing. With that aviation, that concern of shutting down airports in Alaska and the desire from Birchwood is like, "We're willing to adopt airports." And we've heard some other airports that are willing to do that, but we're not hearing that carried on by people at DOT.
Just clarification. Say that again, Birchwood's willing to do what?
Adopt an airport or adopt a couple of airports. And so, we'll go out to and clean up airports and stuff. In fact, one of the things that was stated was like, "Well, if you do that, you've got to be professionally trained to run a chainsaw and various things like that." And we're saying, "We're willing to fly into airports that need to be cleaned, but we're taking the danger of just getting in there." And, you know, so, maybe getting rid of some of these things that inhibit. One last thing with transportation. I think we need a railroad to Whitehorse. We need to open up another avenue of bringing in supplies to Alaska rather than just our three ways, trucking, aviation, and by sea. So...
I can imagine something on that. So, that Alaska to Alberta rail spur, fifteen hundred miles, is, there's new life into it. There's been investors on the Canadian side that feel they have, actually have the money to invest. It's about thirteen to fifteen billion. So, they're working through a process now, especially on the Canadian side, with some of the First Nations people and permitting processes going through the provinces. And it's slowly moving forward. And so, we're hoping to hear some information here shortly that will determine how far it's actually going to go. I know that, for example, Alberta is hemmed in. They really want to see another access to the Pacific Ocean, potentially through Alaska. So, it's taking on new life and I think you're going to be hearing more about it.
Last two things is getting back to this aspect of regulations. So, just things moving faster in the case of providing more mental health providers and doing services. Want specifically to allow for, accept some Medicaid billing or serving those that are Medicaid. Seeing a bill that's been passed, waiting for regulations. I know, I don't know where he went. Commissioner Crum, is he still here? Anyways, I talked to him before coming in here. This bill eagerly waiting. It was supposed to be enacted January first, two thousand nineteen. It's still not enacted and I'm watching people die from opiate overdose. That could have been helped, so, to move this quickly. The last thing of the education. As you know, I used to own a school to serve special needs kids. And we were doing neuroscience-type stuff, doing innovative things that is really helping kids to move forward. And we need to do this in our schools, but the paradigm is not accepting these type of things. And putting a standard of, sending reliable assessments out there so that we, you know, are seeing this efficacy rather than some, just kind of a empirical opinion. But neuroscience-type work in education. So, thank you.
I think we can make it.
Hi, I'm Mel Napp. And I live here in Eagle River. Couple of things I'm interested in. One of them is... I'm not sure with regard to caucus issue and the binding agreement that exists there. I know you don't have responsibility for it, but is there a possible way that there could be a constitutional amendment that would eliminate that kind of anti-representative government activity within our legislature? Because that's what it is.
There's always that possibility. The only issue is that constitutional amendment has to come from the legislature first.
Cannot the populace suggest that initiative?
Not as a constitutional amendment, but potentially as an initiative by law.
Okay.
Yeah.
How can we get advice about that? I'll check the constitution.
Yep.
Another thing then was with regard to public school funding, I'd like to see somehow that we could make public school funding dependent upon production and outcomes, not just on input. Then with regard to HB 62, my objection to it is it's a huge incursion upon due process for personnel, for people. You cannot take somebody's property. You cannot prevent them from their, having their rights without due process. And that one would do it. It would take away the due process. And finally, when it comes to this, this coming year, we've got a census going on and there's going to be redistricting. And I know that you have personally two appointees that you will be making to the redistrict commission. And I'd like to make sure that you, do you have criteria that you're looking for to fill those positions? And how would you make sure that those people are going to be uncorruptible with regard to gerrymandering?
We're going to pick the best people we can to make sure that it's done the right way. That's the best I can tell you. It's, we're going to really scrutinize the folks that are interested in that and we're going to pick the best people we can.
Hello, Governor. Michael Tavallero here. You've got the toughest, best job in the nation, one of the toughest, best jobs in the nation. Fortunately, we're in a state with the most potential and we're totally underutilized. We got the greatest people in the nation, but we're facing so many failures, Governor. When you look at how much money we've spent just over the last forty years, more than sixty billion dollars, no results. Our kids, more than sixty out of every hundred children in Alaska are not meeting English language art proficiency, nor are they meeting math proficiency. We have the highest per capita cost for education. Our university is ten percent graduation. We've lost accreditation. The litany of failures goes on and on and on, and I'm not here to blame you for that. I'm here to blame the binding caucus for that. The binding caucus has been in existence and has not served the constituency, the voters of the state of Alaska since its inception. It serves Alaska's special interests and it serves the Alaska deep state. Let me remind you, Article Two, Section Twelve of the state constitution provides, "The legislature shall adopt uniform rules of procedure." And we have uniform rules of procedure. I asked the legislature today, "Please show me where caucus or binding caucus are within those rules." Article Twelve, Section Five is our oath of office. We swear to defend and support the United States Constitution and the state of Alaska Constitution. Translated, that means Article Two, Section Twelve should be honored. Nowhere in Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure is the word caucus. My question to you, does the binding caucus override the Alaska Legislature uniform rules of procedure? And if it does, why do we have a constitution? And if it doesn't, then why do we have a binding caucus?
It's an interesting question, Michael. So, well, we have, we know why we have a constitution. I mean, it's the framework for which we govern ourselves. With regard to the internal rules of the legislature, there's laws at government. As you said, there's also the rules that they have put on themselves. Again, I've had a bit of a history with the caucus concept. And, you know, I personally think things could be done differently and better. I do believe that there are some legislators working on changing some of those rules around the caucus.
I submit to you, Governor, that this question needs to be presented to the Attorney General of the state of Alaska for an agey opinion. And if his opinion is contrary to the state of Alaska's constitution, then we need to figure out what we're doing here. Because when we look at the wreckage, the failures, the damage that the binding caucus has done to our state over the past forty years, I'm sure you will agree it's abysmal. Thank you, sir.
So, my little bit different approach is that, first of all, I want to say that I don't think there's a magic wand out there. I hear PFD, PFD, PFD all the time and it always seems to be directed at our governor, but I think that he has only so much that he can do. And so, in that regard, I really encourage people to get out and go to their town hall meetings, email, speak with your other legislators, your local government, also our ones in Juneau. So, you know, this is not a one-man show. It takes everybody and everybody's lawmakers to get out there and change things. So, I've just been also hearing a lot of these different bills that are going out. And I was currently in Juneau and had the privilege, I think, of being on the House floor and kind of seeing how things are done. And there's just one thing that really gets to me as, you know, I'm a parent. I also have a foster daughter. My husband runs a construction company. So, you know, business people, parents, teachers, social services. There's a lot of legislation out there. I mean, we're basically laud into life right now. And so, I would just encourage you to be really careful about what you think you want to change and turn into law because it's really hard to put the toothpaste back into the toothpaste. it's really hard to put the toothpaste back into the tube. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Skyler from Wasilla. I was hoping maybe you were gonna come to the Menard Center and do this there.
Uh, we are, we're gonna be going all over the state, so...
Well, I hope that's one of them.
Yep.
Anyway, my thing is, back when Hammond got, he's the one that promoted all the stuff we're talking about, and, um, it was, you know, this is gonna last twenty years, and then we gotta go transition back to having, you know, the original permanent fund in my mind was, we're gonna have it for a while, and then it's gonna go away because of, uh, you know, oil's gonna run out. At least that was the thought back in the seventies, and that, you know, twenty years, maybe a little longer, well, way longer, and, uh, is there something you can do back to what his thought, that we start tran, using that to transition and make things that transition? Like, people keep talking about it. You know, you wanna set, you asked, man there on the left said, uh, well, do you set a level? Most places I know in, like, California, that is like fifty thousand for a single guy and seventy-five for a couple, and then they start paying income tax. Something like that would be good. Uh, that's one thing I'm getting off my train of thought, but, uh, on, on the permanent fund, the dividend, that to me is what I call a flat tax, like, what was that guy's name, started with a P that wanted to do that? Perot, yeah. Thank God. Well, anyway, he didn't give a fuck. Um, to me, you know, if you're ma, I, I just moved into Wasilla three years ago. I was fifteen miles east of Toquaton in the foothills, and I didn't ask anybody to bring me stuff. I didn't ask them to build me a road. I built six miles of trail that's got, uh, chipper people used eventually. But anyway, uh, that's just the way it should be. Nobody owes any of us anything, and, uh, I think people have lost that. They want, they want, they want, you know, and, uh, I think, you know, like, people move, like, I move out there, that's my choice, and these people that move all the way around, like, if you wanna live in, uh, Wrangle, then that's your choice, or you're a hundred miles from Wrangle, I'm sorry about that. Um, those people have made that choice. So, I, I, I don't, you know, when it comes to the ferry, and if that thing ain't self-sufficient, then what are we doing with it? Well, that's, that's my stance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Clayton Trotter, and I guess, first of all, I want to agree with the fellow that talked about the pro-life issue. I don't want to join his group wherever he is. And, uh, we, we just have to stop killing babies, guys. That's all there is to it. Um, but secondly, I want to thank you, Governor, because you recently appointed me to a commission, uh, the local boundary commission. So, now I are a commissioner, uh, and I hope to be able to serve the people of Alaska, uh, particularly my neighbors here in the Chujak Eagle River area to the best of my ability. I'm a professor at the University of Alaska Anchorage. I teach business law and real estate law, and sometimes management, and sometimes tax if they need me to. I don't like to teach tax. Um, I came here ten years ago, but I wanted to come here when I was eleven. I've told you this story, Governor, of course. When I was eleven years old, Alaska became a state, and as a Texan, I figured I needed to go to the biggest state, and Alaska's the biggest state now. So, I planned to move up here when I was eleven years old. Only took me fifty years to get here, and now I've lived here for ten years. And I just want you guys to know, this is the best state in the union. This is the one where the guys live. Now, on some substantive issues. One thing that Texas has that Alaska doesn't have is ninety-eight percent of the land in Texas is in private hands. Ninety-nine percent of the land in Alaska is in some form of government hands. Only one percent is in the hands of people like sitting in this room. Sixty percent of the land is in federal hands. Forty percent of the land, I think, is, no, I mean, forty...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine percent, yeah, is in state hands, and then twelve percent, I think, is in Alaska Native Corporation lands. But the bottom line is, there's hardly any private land in Tech, in, in Alaska. Your initiative to allow people to trade their PFDs for land is a great idea. It is a wonderful idea, and it's one that ought to fly through the legislature because it saves money, uh, cash for the state. It's a great idea, but I'd like to go a little further. I think that the Western states and Alaska, uh, should join together and file a lawsuit against the United States government. There is no provision in the United States Constitution that says the United States government can own vast tracts of state land and keep it in federal hands. It's not in there, guys. I've read it over and over and over again. Now, they've just done it, the Louisiana Purchase, the Alaska Purchase, but there's no constitutional foundation, and if the people of Alaska as well as Nevada and Idaho and every other Western state got together and filed a, a suit, first of all, I think the president we have would join us in the suit. He's a real estate guy. He understands that the land needs to belong to the people and not the state. And I'll close with this. The definition, and I teach my students about the definition of communism and socialism and free enterprise. The definition of communism is when the state owns the means of production. The definition of so, socialism is when the state controls production, but private individuals still own most of it. And of course, the definition of free enterprise is when the people own the means of production and produce what they possibly can to the best of their ability. When you have sixty percent or seventy percent of the land in state or federal hands, you have, by fiat, essentially a communist state. Because particularly in Alaska, what is the means of production? The land, the minerals, the oil, the gas, the fish, the timber, and we've gotta ask the government for permission to go on their land, which I don't believe they have a constitutional authority to keep. Now, that's, that's kind of an extravagant argument, but it's about, do you, do you realize that all of the states on the East Coast, only two or three or four percent of the land is in public hands? In New York State, most of the land's in private hands. New Jersey, most of the land's in private hands. Everywhere on the E, on the W, East Coast, it's in private hands, but not in the West. I will. Hey, guys, let me just borrow that. I'll give it right back. Don't, uh, trust me. I'm your lawyer. Trust me, right? The best thing that we could do for Alaska, there, that's the question, is to get all that land the federal government's controlling right now into the hands of private Alaskan citizens. That's my opinion.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. We've come to the conclusion of this evening. Governor Dunleavy.
So, I want to thank everyone for coming out and spending time here. I know that, uh, Alaska's a diverse place. Not everyone in here agrees with some of the decisions I've made. Uh, some do. Uh, it's, it's gonna be working together, though, that we're gonna get out of this, and I've seen Alaska come together, whether it's earthquakes, whether it's fires, whether it's a neighbor that needs help. It's just the way we are. And, you know, the last couple of years have been difficult because of the budget situation. As I mentioned earlier, it's kind of, uh, it's kind of taken the air out of the, uh, oxygen out of the room in terms of other things that we should be working together on as we move forward. So, it's, um, it's almost midway through the session, and we've got the legislature down in Juneau working on things. I'm, I'm, I am in correspondence with them. I'm meeting with them. Uh, we're talking, and, um, I'm, I'm optimistic that we're gonna come out of this with a resolution that we can move forward because, again, I think what we all want is we're not just looking at, uh, answers today, but we're looking at building in Alaska together for our kids and grandkids. I, I really do agree with, uh, what was said in that this is the greatest state in the country. I wouldn't be here, and I don't think a lot of you would still be here. Uh, we have some tremendous opportunities with our resources, with our location. Um, we just need to pull together on this budgetary issue and a few other things, and I think, um, I think Alaska's best days are ahead of it, ahead of us. So, I want to thank you for coming out. There's still gonna be an opportunity if you, uh, didn't pick up, uh, a packet, uh, out front to grab a packet, but any, any feedback that you want to give in terms of helping us solve these issues, um, I really am encouraging it. I really do look forward to it, and again, I want to thank, uh, I want to thank you folks for coming out tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a great night. Drive safely.